I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we were going to open this with the OKR awards, but since our attorney's not here yet, I'm going to go ahead and have Brandy start.
All open with claims in the number five sixty-five, seven fifty-two forty. Just a few notations there. We have a thirty-two thousand dollar payment for our utility poles. Our electric invoice for the month is three hundred and seven thousand dollars. And we did have our B L Anderson bill for thirty-one thousand to the wastewater plant.
Yeah, is he here?
For the blower.
Yeah, that blower, I'm thinking that was like last year we awarded that. Was that last year? So it's another twenty twenty-two expense?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I believe it's been a while.
Okay.
How many other questions on that?
Uh, I don't lose to prove.
Call him, favor.
Just sit back.
You can do this one right here.
That blower is supposed to show up today. It didn't show up, so hopefully tomorrow.
That we just approved paying for?
Yeah, I believe so. They called me last week, said it was going to be eleven, twelve. They needed us to unload it.
So they they've invoiced for it?
FedEx didn't bring it.
Yeah, they said they could get the send line up the hill, but they never called. We're going to give them an hour advance so I can have the equipment set there.
Okay.
They never called.
Do you want to just check with me and I'll hold that check until I receive it?
I'll check with Bruce in the morning, building, and then I'll get back to you first thing.
Meeting minutes from August seventh.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Call him, favor.
Billing adjustments of three thousand five fifty seventy-three.
Motion to approve second.
How'd you write that? Got a motion? Okay, we're good.
We didn't vote, did we?
Yeah. Oh.
Call him, favor.
All right.
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention to you.
That's all I have until a little bit later on.
Okay. I do want to give a special thanks to Spectrum Printing, Block Party donations, and Main Street. Well, Bill?
First, I'd like to say congratulations to Hannah Janfield for being our first full-time female officer hired that was sent to the academy and graduated. We've had many officers, female officers, in the past, but she is the first officer that we hired full-time, sent to the academy, and she's coming back to graduate.
Congratulations.
We also hired Brady Walters, and Brady Walters went to the academy today and took a PT test and passed, so he will be starting next week.
Okay.
Fantastic.
So we'll have four days with six full-time officers.
And the only other thing I have is I'd like to just once again thank our generous donators. G N M Variety, Capital Keen Rental, The Push Newspaper, Gamma Sigma Chapter, Kappa, Kappa Kappa, Main Street Block Party, Kathy Princeton State Farm, Bloomfield, Spectrum Front Marketing, Main Street Rockville, and A H A S. Good question.
Well, Doug?
Yeah. Well, just to kind of go over the last couple of weeks, guys have been pretty busy. We've got Jefferson and High Street Water Project. We've got that seed for grass to grow back. They've worked on some water meter install. We had a water leak on six oh four Woodland. It's been repaired. We've upgraded a lift station. We have a lift station on Primrose, a small lift station. Been there for years. We upgraded the electrical system on it. It was old screw-in bus uses that were...
Really?
Yeah, so we set a new pole. Electric Department did.
Okay.
Put a new line service, a new breaker box, and all that in there. So we've upgraded that. So it should be good for several years over there. They've been busy. They've got new services on Virginia Street, new apartments there. Got the service all installed, same as X-Grade, new building, the new business coming. We've got our service all new installed for them. Been busy cutting lines out, three-phase on Bloomingdale Road, or pole on Bloomingdale Road, I'm sorry. And we cut the phase, three-phase service between Anderson Street and Rockville Road, and the same on Voorhees and Tulip Lane. We've got a lot more trees cut out. We've worked alleys, and I've done a... My evaluations are almost complete, other than Allen Hills. He's off to the family situation, so I don't know if he'll be back this week or before I leave. So if not, I will get you a copy of the evaluations. All that. They went very well, pretty easy. I made a change in the water department. With one of the employees, we did a swap. I think we'll help advance our water department a little better and everything. So we did make a little swap there with a couple of guys, and just see how that goes. So, and then the only purchase, I got a couple of purchases here for the electric department. One is wire. We need underground wire. We need wire for the Bridge Festival, for the tent. We got marking flags and some weatherhead conduit at the total of ten thousand six hundred twenty-two ninety-five.
Motion to approve second.
And the other thing is, is we need a couple of electrical vaults, is what the transformer's set on, and the wires are inside it. So if you have to work on or something burns up, it's easy access. We've ordered two of them. One will go to Benjamin's, and they'll pay for it when we put it in service. Two of them are seven thousand one hundred twenty-two and ten cents. And then the other one will be a backup and everything, so we'll need approval on that.
Motion to approve second.
Call him, favor.
All right.
What's our pole situation?
Uh, they're in. We got them. We got them within a week and everything, so they're down there. They've been in contact. I hate we end up with Indianapolis Power and Lights poles, because if you see any of them installed, it's got their initials on it. So we did call and make sure everything was okay, and that's what they think's happened, that that truckload came here, but they're what we needed, so, but yeah, they showed up. And then, let's see, and then the next couple of weeks, always, we're going to work on the water and electric. It ought to be water for sure in the parking lot this week. We're not sure about the electric yet. I talked to that gentleman today, and he said he'd definitely be ready for electric, but definitely in the next couple of days get water in, so that part of it will be done. We're going to be working on Tulip Lane and Harris Street driveways, try to get them all poured. We got Voorhees done last week. And we're going to be cutting brush on Bridston Road for, before the festivals. It's kind of grown out there, and then we're going to start the painting of the fence at the Rockville Cemetery. Ladies from the training center will be doing that on Mondays.
You got the fence out there?
Yeah, so we'll be getting wire brushed and painted, so that'll start probably next week on that. Then I did talk to Ronnie Black, Jr., today from U Mac, and first of September, they're hoping to get started on change of hydrant out on Strawberry Road and the other one, and then we'll... He wants to sit down and figure out a day they can come in and change the water line on Martin Street. So hopefully that all happens September.
How about the charging stations?
Yeah, they'll, well, Britain's been in contact with them and everything, so it should be... Once we get into a certain point, we contact them, and they come in and everything.
Charge point or impound?
Yes, charge point.
Charge point. Hey, on Voorhees, guys did the concrete work on that. What about that one blacktop drive? Did we tear, they tore that drive out?
They're going to do all the blacktop.
They're going to do that?
They, Casey's going to do that.
Casey does the blacktop. So, well, they started Tulip Lane today to cut, got a lot of it cut, and I think they got over to your place and got some cut.
I haven't been home yet.
So we're hoping to get that done next week or so, too, if we can. And then we also got cut over there where you asked about Michigan and York. We're hoping to get that done, hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, not really that turd, so there's not a step down there for everything. So we got that. It's already cut. We just got to dig it out for them.
Well, I think that'd be a little better.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Especially around the stool and everything, walking. It's kind of an odd place for a step down. So that's all I got to show my question.
Back to the cemetery. Did you always all go have a look at the vault?
Yep.
That Andy and...
Very nice.
They did a nice job on that. Really did, so.
Yeah, it was really nice.
Well, thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
You want to do updates or you want me to jump ahead?
I got something. These board meetings I went to last week, I can throw those in here somewhere.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, well, we'll go, start off cemetery. Let's see.
Which I think looks very nice.
Yes, looking really good. The, we need some pamphlets. Update our pamphlets where the regulations have been revised. Man, you discussed quote today. I saw this afternoon. We're just looking at two hundred pamphlets. It's not a lot of money, three, five hundred, $100 top. Don't know what option to go with. They're still waiting on the leak locates at Memory Gardens. If you see U Mac, next time you talk to them, you might ask them about that. Kevin's been talking to them at the...
Yeah, actually, Mike gave me their number. I'll call that guy tomorrow and get him scheduled in.
They had the fence on here, but you already got that going. Then a window in a Puget Monument, the old cemetery needs fixed. I don't know. You were at that, you were there, weren't you, at that meeting? What, what we deciding now? Who we going to contact or what?
I would, I would contact somebody like maybe Professional Glass that said come in, see if they can cut Plexiglas or some kind of... You put it, they prepared it before with glass. Somebody did. I don't know who did. Kids just broke it out, so we need to put something in there that's maybe a little tougher to break or something.
Well, can we just cut some Plexiglas?
Well, I mean, if we could cut it, I don't, as long as it's...
You can get a cut out of Ace.
Okay.
They'll cut it for you.
Yeah, well, we'll take a look at it, see if we can get in there, whether it's chains, or we'll see what kind of shape it is.
Okay, our next board meeting last week, Toxway Day, went to West Central Solid Waste District Board. Yeah, next Toxway Day is nine sixteen twenty-three, Saturday at Fairgrounds, eight to one. Should probably be in touch with you about it if you hadn't already. Then we had our impa quarterly review. Pretty good meeting. Doug was there, too. We had, I can't think of the guy's name, but two impa reps were here.
Mike Adams was one.
You know?
Dan the other.
And Dirk. But we talked about the next potential project, and that was continuation of the Sill Street upgrade from Rockville out to pretty much top of Red Bud Hill. I think we did down Red Bud Hill about ten years ago. So they're going to work up some cost on that. Then I think you just mentioned about tree trimming in the alleys and looking at rating and attachment for the skid steer, for vegetation work, maybe. And in the last meeting of last week, we had Stormwater Board meeting. The boards requesting bids on Phase One of the Jackson Voorhees project. That's called Storm Main Two, which actually is not on Jackson Voorhees. That's along Beetle Street off of Howard Avenue down to that big valley that's just east of the high school there. We need to get that done because the water coming from Jackson Voorhees will impact that, so we have to have it ready to go. It's, what is it? It's four hundred thirty-eight feet of forty-eight inch pipe and two hundred fifty-six feet of fifty-four inch pipe. It's basically a straight chop down that side of the road. Originally, we set a date of nine fourteen. There's been discussion moving the opening date back to ten eleven, both in the morning, around seven. We just want to see, okay, what's the estimate? What's the cost look like here? And see if we can do it, because that has to be done first or anything else. And also, I guess, there's been a lot of discussion having to finance that project. The cost increase are getting pretty, pretty serious out there. Originally, it estimated to be a one point nine million project. Stormwater has debt till 2027. January, I think it's paid off. You know, we were looking at trying to do community crossing. We also have issues with sewer under the streets, and so we need to address that. Deckard Engineering is working on videoing those.
Get the robot in tomorrow.
Okay.
After tomorrow, we can start getting some video played.
But we're looking, you know, may, we're going to have to look at this, try to do it all-inclusive. Try to do both at the same time, the streets, probably go for OKR as opposed to trying to do community crossing one street at a time. You know, it's pretty, well, it's all up in the air still, but that's kind of what we're thinking now. It's still a year or two. How probably, I don't, I don't know. It's just... We do know, though, that this first pipe has to be put in, so we're going to get some bids, see where that comes in. And that's all...
I have a question.
The stuff we talked about.
So we have the detention pond at Detention Pond at Fast Pace. They're not going to open.
Okay.
It's some...
What we want to do?
It's also somewhat unattractive and...
It is kind of, yes, unattractive is a polite way to put it. Yeah.
Is there a thought process on that?
Yeah, golly, I don't know.
I actually just talked to somebody at Fast Pace today. The lady emailed me back. I explained to her the situation. I think I explained to her a couple of months ago, but I had told her that I'd already been cited this violation. It was court day set. And she got back to me and said that that has been contracted with a company to mow, so she's looking into that. So I don't know if it's, is that company only mowing the front section? Are they saying they're mowing at all? I'm not really sure, but I'll kind of keep in touch on what's going on.
Unfortunately, court was today, and they did not show up, so they...
What's that?
Court was today for them.
Oh, okay. I was thinking it was next month, so...
They didn't show up, and they got a default judgment.
Okay.
For the full fine.
All right. But she said they, they have a contractor, a company, no, it's not a local company, but they do have a contractor that's supposed, was supposed to be taking care of all the grounds.
Are they watering the grass? Looked like the sprinklers were on out there this morning. They put in, they put in irrigation, didn't they?
They've got it. We're just going to skip it.
They can write them up tomorrow if that's twenty-seven grand.
It's for, it's for sale.
Yeah, price is like two point seven million. It's crazy.
It's ridiculous.
Well...
And then I have one other question. So in alleys, if somebody's got like trees or something hanging into the alley?
I mean, we can go in, I guess.
Oh, it's there, though. We got them.
And we opened the bid, so I guess it's...
Okay.
Hopefully, so.
No, it's all right.
She started waiting on us.
Where'd she go?
Okay, so we did a bid opening for our OKR water project, and we had two bids come in. We had B and T bid at four million, two sixty-six, three fifty-nine, thirty-eight. We had Graves come in at seven million, one seventy-one, seven seventeen. So we have those two bids to consider. We also have reached out, and I have two proposals back. I have a proposal from the Fountain Trust Company. Also got a proposal back for First Financial Bank on funding. These proposals came back, these bids came back much higher than I think anticipated from our original work from last year. So I do have two loan amounts and the amount of two million dollars to consider. I've got Fountain Trust Company with an interest rate of five point five nine, and this is going to be on a ten-year fixed rate. And I've got First Financial Bank coming in at a two million fixed rate for ten years at five point one two. So we have those two loans to consider and those two bids to consider on the water project.
Well, you want to talk about the water project in general, anybody, for a minute? We just, no?
Sure.
Well, you know, it can be much higher than expected. It certainly, we originally planned to finance all this internally, and then now we're going to have to finance externally. Still a ten-year short period compared to fifteen, twenty, or thirty, so I guess that's the upside. You always look for the upside.
And it still needs done.
And it still needs done. I don't know how the, the line we're replacing from the well field to town is, but we know it's older than the one that is probably mid-seventies, really mid-seventies, goes to the other water tower. And what's the material ductile? What's this stuff called that's in there? It's, what's that pipe? Is it ductile? I've heard, huh?
Ductile?
Ductile. There you go. You know the lingo. Yeah, it's pretty old stuff. My, it's kind of like concrete envelopes, isn't it?
It's transile.
Transile, yeah, it's very similar to that. It's, you know, backup power generator, quarter million. Pipe's about thirty percent of project, and one point two on the low bid, I think, for just the pipe. It was just amazing how expensive the thing is. You know, we, we we need to do it.
Yeah, we're losing a lot of water and...
Well, yeah, that, hopefully will address some of the water loss issue. We're replacing...
Valves and hydrants and...
Do we expect prices to go down any time?
We don't expect prices to go down. Yeah, thirty water valves, eight hydrants. A lot of work at the water building out there, and then we got a lot of small water lines in here, too, being replaced.
I think wellhead protections included in that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a good project, needs to be done, so.
Right. I saw, I get the impression everybody's pretty much agreed on that, huh? Well, so, except the low bid, I suppose.
Is that a motion?
I moved except the low bid. That was from...
B and T.
B and T, right? Yeah. Okay.
There was a second out there, right?
Yeah, there were two.
Two seconds.
This one you and Baker.
Okay.
Huge difference in cost. Do we have a clue about that?
Did you look at the breakdown here? I mean, I don't know. I mean, compared to what the original estimate was. Our, Deckard's here. What's your thoughts on that?
It was a little higher than we expected, but original estimate was...
Twelve months old. Yeah, it's August of 2022.
And pipes in particular have gone nuts since then, so.
Yeah, a lot of pipes.
We knew it was going to be high, a little higher than we thought, but we've adjusted our price sheets based off these. It'll be a little closer next time, hopefully, but things are moving so rapidly that we're never shooting quite high enough.
Yeah, hope it slows down.
I mean, I think we advertised to as many people as we could to try and get the lowest bids we could. Seems as everybody's got work, not really eager to bid real well. Yeah, we were, we were hoping for a little lower, but...
Well, we've got one of two banks here. I mean... Fountain Trust, you're Fountain Trust, right? I know Doug. Who's your, who's your buddy?
This is Austin White.
Hi, Austin.
If you haven't heard, I have gone, and my job has changed with the bank. I'm now the development officer. I work in Covington two days a week, six hours, and then Austin has been hired. He's been here about four months with us. He's the loan officer at Rockville. We're still seeking a second loan officer. If you know someone with a bachelor's degree, we'd be glad to talk to them. Austin especially.
Okay. Well, welcome to Rockville. So, want to talk about our quotes here on loans? I mean, I, everything is about the same. I know that the fee on First Financial is higher than for one of Fountain Trust up front. They were both at one hundred and twenty months. Yeah. You know, I have both for two million. One's five point one two, one's five point five nine.
What's your suggestion? You're the financial guy.
Well, I mean, it's a fifty-five thousand dollar, it's a, what is it, about fifty-five, six seventy-four interest difference over the life alone.
As stewards for our customers, they would probably recommend we save that money. Would be my guess.
Well, that, that would be a good argument, lady. Is there anything else to consider here? I don't know. I mean, does Fountain Trust have anything to, to say here?
Did they wait their prepayment penalty? Because the rates do go down, you guys, with our bid, obviously, there's no prepayment penalty.
Yeah.
They did.
I haven't seen the other bids, so I can't comment on that.
I think that was asked.
That would have to be in the letter of writing, otherwise it would probably be a prepayment penalty. Ours specifically says no prepayment penalty.
Yeah, I don't see it listed here, Doug. Yeah. It says on first, the bank will require an opinion of counsel regarding qual, the bank qualified tax exempt loan status. I mean, we're a municipality. See, I didn't say anything on prepayment penalty there. You guys have that. Okay, you guys want proof of availability to satisfy all legal requirements to borrow the two million? Prior to funding, financials, I assume.
Those are the statutory requirements.
Yeah, okay.
From the town include their attorney.
Okay.
That basically enable for your group to sign and document who you're going to have sign on your behalf and under what conditions. At least the bid should say no prepayment penalty. We believe, or at least myself and Austin, when we talked to Lucas and Kurt and Fountain Trust, I mean, we felt strongly that if some of us do believe the rates are going to go up in the next year, but then you believe in the next two, three, four, five, or three to ten years it's going to go down, then the prepayment penalty is very relevant, because most banks do have prepayment penalties to pay loans. And that's a pretty general statement, a SOB statement.
Well, how's, how's the board feel about the question, prepayment penalty? What do you want to see? What's that?
I agree with that some more. I'm kind of like, I'm not a banker, though, or a lawyer, so.
No. You know, on your, your document, Doug, it talks about security, general obligation to town payable from tax levies. I mean, it's really from rates, utility rates. There's no tax money involved. Of course, some people part field tax utilities are like a tax, but yeah, it's a payment for service. Yeah.
What do we think this?
Rated subject opinion accounts regarding bank qualified tax exempt loan status. They're just saying you have to be a municipality, I suppose. I don't know. It's, that's, that looks like a legal jumbo jumbo to me.
So does that mean, does that mean it can go down? I don't know.
It's probably in conjunction with this statement down here on their letter, I would say it probably means the same thing. We're going to have to, and they could have to prepare a document for us to...
And we also, we also have the relationship.
With Fountain Trust.
With Fountain Trust, as opposed to First Financial. Been with them probably about fourteen, twelve, twelve, I think, about fourteen years, I think.
Yes.
Yeah. And they sent somebody to the meeting, two people. They sent two people to the meeting. Yes, appreciate that.
So you guys want to vote on this, or do you want to wait till?
I'd like to take a look, because I'd like to know if that weaves that open to change. Do you want to make a motion, make a motion?
Well, yeah, I'm not concerned. I believe either one will finance us. Our financials are good, and we're a municipality. I don't have any concern about, about qualifying under either one. Of course, I'm not an attorney, but I, I, I feel like the relationship we have, we need to, we need to continue on that relationship. The interest rate is a slight difference, but it, relationships are important. We've borrowed from Fountain many times. Then we have from First over the past fifteen years or so. No, I'm okay with Fountain Trust. I'm moving. We go with Fountain Trust myself.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Call him, favor.
All right.
The bows?
I would like the attorney to look at it just to verify, and I'm just going on interest rates on it.
Motion carries, so. Motion carries, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess you'll be in touch with Brandy as far as when we need to start this thing, when the project starts, and all that support. And Nick. All right, thanks. Doug and Austin.
Thank you.
I'm glad to.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Austin.
Yep.
Thank you. Troy, you got anything?
Really?
Luke, you got anything you want to talk about?
Yep. Just here to answer any question you guys had for us. Parking lot on us for the numbers on Beetle.
Yeah, we need an estimate on Beetle, and you guys want to update the cost on Jackson Borghy, just kind of give us, give us, uh, so we won't have a heart attack down the road and we, you know, perhaps get bids.
It'll be better.
Yeah, uh, parking lot's going along, um.
Say we stayed that last week. I think water and electric state. How's that country going?
Uh, everything's state. The thing we're really waiting on is, there seems to be a little mix up on the light poles.
As far as size of them or what?
No, uh, we're supposed to put, we're putting electric in. But mine was understanding the contractor before the concrete. He said it's not in their bid proposal. So we're waiting on Roger to figure out who's, why it was.
Pushing my mind to figure out.
Roger's told, talked to me on the phone the other day and said it is in there, and they did bid on it. They told me today that they did not bid on, so. So we're waiting on what's going to happen there.
Okay.
Other than that, I think we're, we're moving right along. Just somebody's got to make the decision of what's going to happen there.
Are states' water electrics still in the ground, or those need to be done sometime?
I, I think they're still there. Uh, you know, they've been moving a lot of rock and everything today. So the gentleman leading the project over is very, very nice, very and really easy to work with so far. So that's nice. That's the only thing up in the air right now is.
It's not just for the poles, just for the lights or any other?
It should be pretty small amount, really.
Yeah, so.
What about the charging stations? Has that been rectified?
Well, I believe we're, I, I'm under the impression we're pouring that pads, and I'll.
That is not on price, to my knowledge. I was told to totally exclude that for.
Yep, I believe that somehow that was on us. So we'll, we'll get closer with working with that gear and we'll get them poured. That's, the only big thing is, is trying to figure out who's going to pour the concrete for the light poles.
We do know where we're setting.
Yeah, they've been marked, so. And just, and the bolts, because the lights, I guess, hadn't been ordered. But we're gonna, they're going to send us the bolts, or we will send somebody after them, so we can have them to set them. And then the concrete poured, so.
I thought Brett got an answer today, but he was checking to see if those bolts are in. I told him to chat with you about going to get them.
Well, yeah, we've already decided if we have to send somebody, wherever, we'll send somebody.
I just don't know if he got back with an answer. And the thing with Halifane, apparently they needed a signature on every single ten-page sheet that they sent, is why they didn't get it ordered.
Oh, okay.
So I initial nine of the ten pages.
Yeah, and I've already told Brett, if I'm gone, you know, I'm leaving Thursday, so if something, they do have to, Scott's there, send Scott. Scott's always willing to jump in the truck and go, so we will go after.
Yeah, I thought if it was local enough that we could go get those rather than massive shipping and maybe still have them by the end of the week.
Yeah. And it looks like maybe electric may not be till next week anyway, the way he talks, maybe, so. Maybe it's a few more days to get them in, so.
If you're good with it, then.
Yeah, I think, well, I think we'll be all right. The big thing to me is just figuring out who's going to do the. And then if we're going to do it, somebody's going to have to help shoot and get the grade right and everything, so that'll be the big thing. Other than that, I really seem to think it's going pretty good.
Okay.
Do you want to go through the other, just, there's not, I mean, there's just a couple of updates. Let's see. South Market, I did forward that email to all of you that there were some changes to that erosion plan. So, um, uh, the project supervisor said most likely it'll be the day after Labor Day before he sees any action there. But they still, he will still get in contact with me on a meeting. So I'll make sure that Doug and I are at least on that conference call or whatever for that meeting, but I'll make sure I send the information to everybody. So anybody that wants to or has any questions, if you've got questions that you want me to ask, I have a list of them just from public that have been asking a million questions about what's happening on South Market, where are they going to be, timeframe. So I'll try to get as many of those answered in that meeting. Forty-one North, um, that completion date was supposed to be set for August fourteenth, which I, I don't know all of the work, other than I got an email back that they're waiting on R and C to finish the line work. So the project engineer was, or the contractor was going to reach out to R and C and ask them, you know, where do you stand with that? So, um, that.
Well, I saw R and C out there the other morning, third or Friday morning, so I don't know what they're doing.
I saw them Friday.
Obviously, the driveway's not done and our fence is not up either, so.
There was a, when we were up north and last night, there was like a little short driveway.
They got the approach.
They got the approach done, but the driveway's not. And, I mean, I recall we were putting up a six-foot wrought iron fence there.
With, with some kind of a little roof too, weren't we?
I thought it was like a building, but it looks just like a pedestal to me.
I thought it had, you know, like the four corners and then a roof covering it.
So, I mean, I'll check. I know that the project supervisor's reaching out to, you know, R and C, where are we at? But a couple of those other questions, the fencing and stuff like that, those aren't finished yet, so.
R and C was putting a guide wire in. They called them locate for that, so that really didn't have anything to do with the lift station. That's what locate was called in.
Okay. That's all I really had on, just a couple of little updates. And then, since I'm already talking. The PCI, just once their typical, would like to ask for permission for their reclosures for the festival, so those do the same. They did suggest, or they wanted to do the no-turning, no-turn left on Jefferson Street at thirty-six. I did mention to them that, you know, I don't think that anybody definitely has an issue with that, but they would need to clear that for the state. Just if they don't put a no-turning sign on the state, on the highway, they need to check.
That would not apply to emergency vehicles, correct?
I, I would think so. But if they done it, they done it years ago.
Yeah, the law.
Stop it.
Right, right, right.
It used to be there for years. They used to do that.
I remember.
And I think the big thing is, is try to clear up High Street quicker, especially in the afternoons and evenings and everything, so I think that's the.
Just wanted to make sure to pass that along to her, that she makes that contact with the state, that we're not altering traffic flow on the highway.
And we're just applying the sign.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, but other than that, I don't think there was any additional street closures. If you guys wouldn't mind, I would like to go ahead and document a vote, just typically we do that, so. Does anybody need me to read that breakdown?
Don't worry.
Hi.
They did want to add a date to that, then, correct?
Extra day, yeah. Get stuff set up.
Okay, thank you.
You're up, Nick.
Commissioners had a question. I tried to text you guys. They were wondering how long, I guess the bicentennial committee had asked to have banners up, or a banner. And they were asking how long the banner would remain up, was their question.
Where, I mean, where?
Mandy had made a request, I guess, on behalf of the bicentennial committee. And they, that's the question was asked. I told them I didn't know anything about.
Where would it go? I don't know.
I know nothing about.
I guess we need to refer to Josh and Mandy.
Besides, there was a request made to put up a banner on county property somewhere, I assume. And they're just asking.
They sent a request to the county?
Yeah, the commissioners.
Okay.
And the commissioner's question was, how long would the banner stay?
Sometime, you know, they put banners on the courthouse lawn sometimes.
That's my assumption, is it's the courthouse lawn, but the question wasn't where it was located, it was how long will it remain there? And I told them.
I just don't think that any of us have been notified of that, so.
Okay.
I can get an answer for you. I just didn't know anything about it.
I don't necessarily need the answer. They just need to let the commissioners know. So, um, the other thing I have is just upcoming court dates. August twenty-ninth, we have one here. And September fifth, we have one. September twelfth, we have six. September twenty-sixth, we have two. And October third, we have one, as far as ordinance violation hearings. Um, I did file default judgment on one today, um, that we've got, we'd had a court date and they didn't appear for. And then we have several that we've dismissed because they've become compliant. And there's at least two that are going to be tried, so that's kind of where we're at on ordinance, assuming Bill hasn't filed any ones yet.
No one has filed on today.
Yeah.
How, how will send you my date in the court?
As far as the default judgment one?
Yeah, because they're still on one.
Let the judge order it first and then write me another one. But yeah, I, I don't know. But he'll probably sign the order in the next two weeks, so.
For the default judgment?
It's a default judgment on ordinance violation. Huh?
He's not due today.
Did he? All right, for failure to appear, so. Yeah, um, we can find them every day that they're not compliant, but usually what I ask for the first time, if they don't show any interest, reach out or do anything or try to appear, I ask for the maximum. If they at least work with us, I usually give them some additional time, as you do.
Well, apparently they reached out to Brad. So he talked to somebody, right?
I reached out to them on another matter, and she forwarded, I asked about it. I said that the product, or the property's becoming very unsafe.
It's up to my chest almost.
Yeah, I said, I receive complaints daily about how it looks, so, um, she said that it's contracted with a company that's supposed to be knowing that.
There's now a fine of twenty-five hundred dollars, so.
She was going to get in contact with that company.
Well, they didn't appear for court.
So the first, the first, I mean, they currently would have a twenty-five hundred dollar fine?
Judge signed it today.
Right now?
Yep. And that's the maximum fine per day. I mean, I didn't ask for every single day they've been non-compliant, but I did ask for the maximum, so.
Okay.
They really made no attempt to become compliant, so.
And I don't know who's in the knowing front, but I don't, I have no idea. I've never seen anybody on a lawnmower going.
Rest of it looks terrible.
Somebody is, but they're not doing all of it.
No. And some of them we had continued and we reset, but, um, and some of them are new court dates on newer things, but there's two of them going to trial that I know of, so. That's all I have.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, I, it's to Bill and perhaps Nick. Yeah, I meant to bring it a meeting or two ago, and it's been brought up again. The sign there, when you pull out of Casey's, All Sops move will sign there, it's, it's, it's inside the sidewalk. But it's, you know, it's one of those things you can change letters on. It's about four feet high, maybe, I don't know. But some folks are having problems seeing, obviously, getting out there. And I said, what you got? I don't know. I know we have assigned ordinance. I can't remember what in the world it says. I don't know if it's anything that can be done, but they said we'll at least ask, and so I'm asking. I think.
Has anybody reached out to All Sops to ask?
I don't know. They, I doubt they did.
Because they're usually pretty accommodating on things without us having.
But yeah, that sign's kind of a hazard for some folks getting out there. Why people driving forty, I mean, well, it is a thirty, what, thirty, forty mile an hour speed limit there.
It was moved, it's the same one I'm thinking of. It's moved, been moved once, because pulling off a parkway, you couldn't see.
Well, yeah, it was down towards Parkway before, wasn't it? Yeah.
You couldn't see nowhere south. You were basically just kind of. And they did move it back after some people talked to, I don't know who talked to them, but they did.
I remember Catholic Church, they were doing a new sign, and they came to us and had some questions, and we looked at the ordinance then, and they had to make some modifications.
Ten feet off the sidewalk.
I don't remember what it says, but usually they'll just accommodate us however we ask them to, so I don't foresee the ordinance being necessary, probably.
Well, I did my, my, I brought it to the board. Uh, Bill, you want to?
I'll reach out.
Reach out and see if they can figure something out. Thanks.
Can I own business?
I don't think so.
Any new business?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't. Well, you know, Brandy, Brandy said now that medical trust thing, afternoon forwarded, you know, it looks like the rates are saying about seven point one percent, if I read it right, for next year's, where our interest rate, our interest rates are, health insurance rates potentially go up.
Three to seven point one.
This is under old, I guess. It's thrive. I thought thrive was coming back tonight.
I didn't get, the guy was going to get in contact with me and send me some notes, the Park County related, but I haven't heard anything from him, so.
Tonight.
Okay.
Okay, they're looking for that for next year, so it's still a few months out originally. So, yeah, I don't know if you want to say anything about that, but it's encouraging.
Well, it says, just want to give a quick update. I spoke with engineering firm this morning. They have advised that we can expect a petition to rezone this fall to do plan, plan on moving forward with this project. That would be the McDonald's project, so.
Fish sandwich.
Apparently it is a go when we do not do it, so.
What else?
BZA will vote for rezoning, or not for rezone.
See, yeah, that's kind of exciting.
Yep.
Does it mean you've made it and you have a McDonald's?
Huh?
Does it mean you've made it?
Well, you know, it puts you up there on the map. I mean, having McDonald's is a.
Golden arches.
The golden arches and fish sandwiches.
Chick-fil-A, I don't know about that. I'd like to have one.
Adjacent to Ivy Tech, the lot across the.
Across from Casey's, John Bear, Fetter, and.
I do know a neighbor directly behind him who claims he owns that part of that alley.
Don't own alleys. You don't own alleys. Now, we've had another person in town that said they own an alley.
I'm just telling you.
Unless you can find where it was abandoned.
He's, says he's got paperwork, so there's a lengthy discussion.
So just in case this comes up, and I'm sure it will, because there's two alleys going to be on each side, or an alley on each side, north and south of it. Are you guys? You know where I'm talking about?
Yeah, there'll be one on that, the south side. There used to be some trailers in there or something. The one on the north side's on the south side of Ivy Tech parking lot, comes out there by Stein's old house.
If requests for one lays off, I mean, are you guys willing to look at that or not?
I think there's maybe, there's probably also going to be a request that one of them, at least halfway down, be closed individually.
Well, I'm willing to accommodate however we need to. I mean, it's, it's not often you get such a national franchise in the town of Rockville, so. Whatever it takes.
We have to.
Yeah, but it's been a while. Been a while.
For change.
How about a Buc-Ee's?
Well, that would be nice for competition on gas prices. Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Don't move.
Yep.